Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our meeting of the Plainville Town Council. Tonight is Monday, May 15, 2023. The regular meeting is beginning at 7:25 PM. I will ask Councilman Wazarkov if he'd please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Moving down the agenda, we do not have any presentations tonight, but we do have a public hearing, and I will ask our town clerk to please read the notice of the public hearing for us.
Thank you. Notice is hereby given. The Plainville Town Council will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Monday, May 15, 2023, in the municipal center to consider an additional appropriation of $555,000 from unassigned fund balance. Copies of said additional appropriation are available for public inspection in the office of the town clerk during normal business hours dated at Plainville, Connecticut this 11th day of May 2023.
Thank you. Michael, before we go forward with the public hearing, can you just give a little brief description? We have the notice alluded to $555,000, so just a couple of little details about what we're doing tonight.
Yeah, I will say that $555,000 is going to be used for the capital improvement project plan, and I actually would probably likely defer to Rob Buten, who's here as our finance director, for any other comments, but it's something we do on an annual basis. It's tied to the budget process, and this appropriation is necessary for this evening and for the proposed budget.
Okay. Thank you very much. At this point, I'll ask anybody from the public, if you wish to speak, on the public hearing regarding the additional appropriation for our capital projects. Please come to the podium, turn on the mic, and state your name and address. Does anybody wish to speak to the public hearing? Does anybody wish to speak to the public hearing? One last time. Does anybody wish to speak to the public hearing? Hearing none, I will close that. Next item is minutes of a previous meeting. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to approve the minutes of the May 1, 2023, regular meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Not all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Item four, announcements and reports. Do we have any announcements tonight from anybody?
Madam Chair.
Rosemary.
I did attend the Board of Library Trustees last Tuesday, May 9. They did take a vote at the meeting to move forward with negotiations with Yale University Peabody Museum on a possible permanent loan of the Bird's Day collection, which I mentioned at a previous meeting. And the details, obviously, still to be worked out within those negotiations. That was highlight of the meeting.
Okay. Thank you for that. Does anybody else have any reports they'd like to share with us tonight? Okay, I would just like to make one note that this is National Police Appreciation Week, and it's a national program that recognizes the work that police departments do in all cities across the country. And I would specifically like to send, if we can, send a note to the chief and ask him to share with his officers and folks that work for our police department that the town council really does treasure the work they do, and we absolutely respect how difficult some of that work can be, and we understand how much of the work takes them away from their family and friends on holidays, weekends, and other celebrations they may have to miss out on because of their work. So as part of that recognition of Appreciation Week, please extend our most sincere thanks to the chief and his entire organization for all the work that they continuously do for us to keep our residents safe and to keep us in good shape overall.
I'll be happy to do that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, if there are no other announcements or reports tonight, we'll move on to some appointments and resignations. Item number one, please.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to appoint Alex Cal at 73 Hilltop Road as a regular member of the Aviation Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Welcome, Alex. All right, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other appointments tonight?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to appoint Betsy Godian of 37 Fairbanks Avenue to the Plainville-Southampton Health District Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Are there any other appointments or reappointments to boards and commissions tonight? None other? Okay. Thank you for that. Board of Education, don't have anything there. Report of the town attorney. Good evening. How are you tonight?
Good evening, Madam Chair. I'm well, thank you.
Good to hear.
Yes, so there's, I have an item under the town attorney to report on an issue regarding a petition that was provided to the town clerk regarding the renovate-as-new school project issue. And I was asked to review whether or not the electors of the town can initiate a petition to referendum to establish an ordinance. And then the second question was whether the electors can initiate a petition to compel the town council to file an application for the renovate-as-new school project. The short answer is there is a section of the charter that provides that electors of the town can initiate a petition for a proposal for an ordinance. That's Chapter 3, Section 12. They're allowed to do that. It has to be in the proper form, signed by the correct number of electors if they wish to do something like that. However, that doesn't answer the second question. On an issue such as the renovate-as-new school project, the town attorney provided an opinion that that type of issue is improper for an ordinance. That's not the type of issue that an ordinance would deal with. And in reviewing the petition that was provided to the town clerk, there were a number of problems, one being, the big problem, of course, it wasn't the correct number of signatures to either, to provide, you know, to be appropriate. So I did provide an opinion, a fully written opinion, to the town manager's office last week. I'm here to answer any questions regarding that opinion. I'll dispense with reading it, but if anyone has any questions, I can surely answer those.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the town attorney?
Madam Chair, the petition, and I don't have a copy in front of me. Did it specifically ask for the town to enact a procedure that would go to a special election, or was the petition, as I understood it, was intended to show support, you know, strong support for the position of doing renovate-as-new? But did it actually ask for the procedure of setting, you know, a special election that, you know, the two sections you refer to would do?
I think so.
Just curious, yeah.
Well, it's a little vague, to say the least, but it says petition to allow Superintendent LaPage to submit the application for the renovate, like, new grant, or MSP. So it was difficult to put this in the right category of what this is because it's vague and it doesn't lay out exactly what it's attempting to do. So in trying to answer the question, I had to find in the charter where that might fall. And under Chapter 3, Section 12, which deals with electors doing a petition to create some type of ordinance, that seemed to be the only thing that fit. And as I wrote in the opinion, that type of matter is within the authority of the town council, not something that's appropriate for an ordinance. An ordinance is something that...
Yeah, I read the opinion. Yeah, okay. But, you know, I just wanted to kind of clarify that that wasn't necessarily the intention, as I understood it anyhow, and as I think you just confirmed, it wasn't necessarily the intention of the persons that organized the petition drive. I think their intention was to show support for the council taking a certain action, but, you know, it wasn't because they were necessarily looking for an initiative that would actually result, in both of those cases, like, a special election.
Yeah, and I can't really comment to that.
Right, yeah. But, yeah, no, I understand, you know, it landed, it did end up in the town clerk's office, and you did want to know, you know, what the next step would be. But I just wanted to clarify that, so that, you know, we're not discrediting what the petitioners did or what they were trying to state through it, but, yeah.
Of course.
Okay. Thank you.
And Madam Chair.
Mr. Wazarkov?
I had a conversation, actually, when I saw this on the agenda. I actually talked to a couple of the people who organized the petition drive. Their intent was not to create or force or make the town council do something. It was simply intended to show support for a renovate-as-new referendum, and they were just hoping to submit the names to show the council that there is some community support for reconsidering the decision we made. So they weren't looking to, through the charter, weren't looking to make the council do anything. They were just simply looking to give the council the information and just to say that there was a significant portion of the community that supported the renovate-as-new referendum.
And that's great. It just, when a petition is submitted to the clerk's office, we get very concerned and questions fly.
Right, yeah, understood.
And our manager gets concerned.
The copy that I gave you? Because technically, they gave it to me to hand out to the council. We just...
Who said when it was submitted to me?
Well, I didn't submit. I handed it to you and said, can you make copies for the council? Like, I don't think it was ever officially, like, here we are officially sending, you know, it wasn't meant, and that might have been my fault. My intent wasn't like, I'm officially submitting this petition to you.
You sent the copies to you, so I...
Well, I meant so that we can get copies to hand out to the... So that was my fault.
Well, in any event, the opinion, we looked into it.
Okay, thank you.
I do appreciate you taking the time to go through that, and, you know, when, it seems to me when residents come to the council and submit petitions and signatures that were collected, and for whatever their intent was, whether it was innocuous or whether it was to actually have some formal action by the town council, I think it's the responsibility of the council to give it to the folks that can help us get to what are our next action items, or do we have to take any action, or what do we do with these documents now that we have them? We certainly didn't, I don't think it would have been appropriate for us to just take them and ignore them. So I do appreciate the work that you've done on that, just so the council, if there's any future questions about the petitions that were submitted to us, we can give them some information about, you looked at it, you reviewed it, and this was the decision in terms of what action items the council can or must or doesn't have to take. So thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Moving on, item eight, report of the town manager. Michael?
Yes, thank you. I have nine, eight items with the financial dashboard and happenings as well, and I wanted just to point out that for items two, three, and four related to the water pollution control facility, and Joe Alloso, the superintendent, is here this evening, and also we have, obviously, the auditor's appointment letter and some other items for new business, and as I mentioned, Rob Buten is here for our benefit as well, in case there are any specific questions. But I'll run through these items that I have, and maybe potentially you might have questions now before we get into new business, or you can save those questions for those individuals under new business. So item one is just a quick update. You've probably seen a lot of press around the Memorial Day Parade, and I'm probably redundant, but I thought I'd use this form to get out the word that it will take place at 9:00 AM on Monday, May 29. And it is a bit of a change and modification to the typical parade route. That's the most important aspect that I want to communicate, which means that the route will start the same way as it has in the past, the intersection of Broad Street and Whiting Street, but the final leg will direct participants from West Main Street up Whiting Street and proceed south back to the starting point. This means that the procession will be shorter and will eliminate Crown and Maple Street. And of course, at the conclusion of the parade, there'll be a small ceremony at the Veterans' Memorial Park on the corner of Maple and Whiting. So just wanted to have another opportunity to get that out there. But there is, I think, a great interest this year with a number of floats that I'm hearing about, and so, great, I look forward to participating, and I think it'll be a great, great event. Item two, three, and four, as I said, involve the water pollution control facility. Item two is the Shuttle Meadow Pump Station item. Shuttle Meadow Road wastewater pump station located at 66 Shuttle Meadow Road serves the southern section of town. It was last upgraded in 2000, and the aging equipment requires significant upgrade. The town started the design process by issuing a request for proposals, RFP, in 2021. Tigen Bond Incorporated was selected through the competitive procurement process. The agreement between Tigen Bond and the town was amended in 2022 to include design phase engineering services, which is amendment number one, and the water pollution control facility is proposing to amend the agreement again to include bidding and construction phase engineering services, which will be amendment number two. The scope of services would include assisting the town during the bidding process, coordinating the Clean Water Act and the state revolving fund application, and associated tasks to get the 2% funding from deep, and assisting the town during the construction of the project and providing part-time engineering services and providing post-construction engineering services. Given Tigen Bond's familiarity with the project, it is recommended that the town continue to utilize their services. There is an item under new business to waive the competitive procurement process and award bid 2023-18 Shuttle Meadow Pump Station bidding and construction phase engineering services to Tigen Bond, Inc. in the amount of $274,000. That'll appear later on in the agenda. Item three is their security cameras. Water Pollution Control Facility is planning to install security cameras at their main plant and satellite pump stations. This project consists of replacing outdated existing camera units and installing new camera units to expand coverage. The original camera system was installed after September 11 attacks, when Congress required security enhancement at water and wastewater facilities. This system was later updated after cameras began to fail, and the Water Pollution Control Facility paid for a third party to monitor the system. The existing system has low-resolution cameras with limited coverage and utility. Water Pollution Control Facility received a quote from Omni Data LLC for a total of $26,333.04, which includes hardware, software, and potential professional installation services. Omni Data products and software are currently utilized throughout the Plainville School System and other town facilities. It is recommended that the town continue to utilize Omni Data services, as they will ensure the Information Technology Department and Police Department have complete access to security cameras throughout the town on a single compatible platform. There is an item under new business to waive the competitive procurement process and award bid 2023-25 Water Pollution Control Facility Security Cameras to Omni Data LLC in the amount of $26,333.04. The third item for the facility is the utilization of the forced sequencing batch reactors, the SBRs, to remove undesirable components from wastewater. A decanter is the mechanism in a SBR that removes clarified wastewater from the tank during the decanting, emptying phase of the operation cycle. Decanters that would be compatible with the facility, SBRs, are no longer manufactured, and it is unlikely that a functional and suitable unit from another facility could be procured. In the event the decanter was to break down, the facility operations would be seriously impacted for a protracted period of time. The facility received a quote from Aqua Aerobics Systems, Inc. for a total of $99,783 to produce a new decanter that can be retrofitted with one of the WPCA's SBRs. It is recommended the town utilize Aqua Aerobics Systems, Inc. as a sole source provider to build a new decanter to retrofit the existing system. And there is an item under new business to waive the competitive procurement process and award bid 2024-01 WPCF SBR decanter to Aqua Aerobics Systems, Inc. in the amount of $99,783. So I don't know if you would like me to pause there, and if there were any questions on any of those three items. Joe Is Present is here if you have any questions on Shuttle Meadow Pump Station, cameras, or the decanter.
You're good?
I'm all set.
Everybody good?
Yeah.
That's fine. Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. I will continue on.
Thank you, Joe.
Hi, Joe, thanks.
Item number five is a vehicle for auction. We have received a request from the Building and Grounds Superintendent Dave Emery to sell a town vehicle at auction. The vehicle in question is a 210 Ford Explorer with a VIN number that I've indicated, and I hope you don't want me to read. But the vehicle is formally used by the fire marshal and has been stored at the Building and Grounds for approximately one year. The vehicle has a blown transmission and a malfunctioning computer module, which is obsolete. It has no value other than parts or scrap, and hence the reason the recommendation is to bring forth this under new business to approve the sale of the vehicle at auction. Item six is the auditor appointment. So Connecticut municipalities are required to notify the State Office of Policy and Management by June 1 of the firm that will be performing the town audit for fiscal year 2023. The finance director is recommending that the town council appoint Clifton Larson Allen, our current auditors, to conduct this audit. There is an item under new business to appoint Clifton Larson Allen as the auditors for the fiscal year 2023. Seven, ARPA discussion. The next item ready for public hearing is the masonry work at the high school. Using a combination of ARPA funds, $150,000, and capital funding of $20,000, the Board of Education is proposing to restore the exterior masonry on the 1954 section of the Plainville High School. The project would include materials, cleaning, repairs, waterproofing, painting, staining, and inspection. The scope of work is estimated to be approximately $170,000 and will be utilizing the EZIQC contracting program through the Capital Region Purchasing Council. There is an item under new business to send this item to public hearing for June 5, 2023. As like all other projects, council has a process of opening a public hearing and passing these items through a public hearing before taking action on those. Item eight is Charter Revision Commission Update. The Charter Commission is in the process of composing their draft final report that outlines their recommended changes to the town charter. The commission is scheduled to meet on Thursday, May 18, to approve a draft report, which will then be posted to the town website for public review. A public hearing is scheduled for Tuesday, May 23, 2023, at 5:30 PM at the Plainville Public Library Auditorium, where the public can share their thoughts on the recommended changes. The commission will meet again after the public hearing to consider any further changes and approve a final report to be submitted to the town clerk. The deadline for submitting the final report to the town clerk is Monday, June 5, 2023, so the commission is on schedule to meet that date. And that is my update for those items, and my last item is the financial dashboard. I'll pause there to ask if there are any question on any of those items.
Everybody all set with the report so far? Okay, thank you.
Okay, on to financial dashboard. So the expenditures are through April 30, 2023. I'm happy to report that the trend is still in our favor, that we have, on the total town budget, we have a percentage spent of 76.4%, which is just under the two-year average of 77.6. Breaking that down to the general government side, spending through 4/30 was $20,252,223, which represents a percentage spend of 81.66%, which is under the two-year average of 84.41. On the Board of Education side, the total spent through April 30 is $30,257,488, which represents 73.25%, and that is just a hair under the two-year average of 73.41. The yellow box, police overtime, again, I commented last time, looking good. The budgeted amount of $550,000. Through April 30, they've spent $343,935, so that's a percentage spent of 62.53. That leaves, at this point in time, a balance of $206,065. So that is trending under the budget, which is great. I'm not sure whether they'll finish the year, but hoping that that trend continues and ends in a positive balance. Roadways overtime is a budget of $76,895. They have spent through April 30, $61,868, so that is 80% spent, 80.46% spent to date. On the building and grounds overtime, their budget of $25,625. Through April 30, they've spent $19,902 of that $25,625. That represents 77.67% of their budget to date. And then the other two are the snow overtime budgets that I reported at the last meeting. Those are not changed, have not changed, and there are no more weather-related snow events, and so that they have a balance in the roadways, snow overtime of $32,795, and for building and grounds, they have a balance of $8,960. On the other side, for the hauler tonnage for municipal solid waste, they have spent through 4/30, they have spent $4,593.76, which is under the two-year average of $4,989. So that's running under. The issue is with the next item, the recycling, which has a budget of $54,180, and to date we've spent $85,121, so we're already $30,000 over on that, which is, obviously, as I've mentioned, reflecting the price and the tipping fees there. So that will continue to monitor and look and see if there's any way in which we can remove or improve some of the recycling, and we do have a few ideas, but we're still working on that. I want to move on to revenues. And revenues at this point in time for April 30, the entire budget, $64,134,560 collected for a percentage received of 97.64%, which is slightly under the two-year average of 99.81 at this point in time. The current taxes are, as of 4/30, $48,966,427, so a 99.93% received. So I think everything trending in the right direction or as predicted. The new change on the bottom of the page there is the unassigned fund balance, and now that the audited numbers are in, I can tell you that the number is $11,545,205, which represents 17.77%. And I know that was on the mind... And I know that was on the minds of many members, you know, waiting to get the audited numbers. So those are in, which happens to be a percent, 1% dip from the 18.87, I believe it was, for the previous number. And nothing has changed with respect to the balance budgeted. So that is our new number, audited number, Special funds. Recreation fund budget expenditures, lagging revenue at this point, but that will change when I report, I'm sure, the next time. As you see, for 4/30, they have spent $56,35, and certainly well under the two-year average because of COVID. But on the revenue side, you can see that they've, obviously gearing up for programs and taking in a lot of revenue and anticipating the new season. So through 4/30, they've taken in $189,218. That represents 97.43% of their budgeted $194,200. So again, just a standard practice in terms of timing with respect to how they collect, open those programs and collect the money. Robertson Airport expenditures. Looking on their side, through 4/30, '23, is $244,186, or 19.76% expended in terms of their operation. On the revenue side, through April 30th, $466,596, or 33.48%. And the fund balance reported there at $301,664. Water Pollution Control Facility budget expenditures through 4/30, on their budget of $42, I'm sorry, excuse me, $4,245,107, they have expended $3,857.24. That is 90% expended, 90.86% expended, and is over their average, but is a reflection of their operation and some things that they had going on that differ from last year. And I'm trying to look, I'm trying to find my notes. And I'm going to have to defer to Rob on that. For water pollution control, was a timing issue? Yeah. Or is it the revenue that came in from the new homes that came in from Farmington?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And so there was, all right. So there was a lot going on in water pollution control. And we were favorable on the revenue side with those items. And the expenditure side, now I remember, was in a recording feature and a booking on the expenditure side. Thank you. That will sort out, I'm sure, in the next cycle as we go forward. Thank you. Plainville Library budget expenditures to date, $571,203, represents 74.82%, which is under their two-year average. And their revenue fund is, revenue through April is $687,040. So that's 94.93% received, under their two-year average of $115, which is a reflection of the dip in investments. And that is it on special funds. And then last page is the major projects. And there's not a lot of change there at all with respect to the road bond, which is 76% complete. And Wheeler Project is just waiting for the reimbursement from the state. Not much happening in the turf maintenance fund, unchanged. And ARPA is, obviously, we're having a public hearing to look at the next item for the high school. And the Town Line Road Reconstruction Program, complete with 92% complete. It's just the balance of money that we're working with the Regional Capital Council on figuring out where that project balances, how that's going to be reallocated. And that is it. Any questions?
Great. Thanks. Does anybody have any questions for Michael about his report or the financial report we just looked at? Great. Thank you. Andy?
Great. Thank you. So we do have a few happenings to report for today. Starting off, the Plainville Animal Control and Plainville Paws are hosting a rabies clinic on May 20th from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the animal control facility at 29 Grainger Lane. The cost is $15 per cat or dog, and the clinic is accepting cash only. Vaccines will be administered by Dr. Shapiro of Ragged Mountain Veterinary. Dog licensing reminder from the town clerk's office. The town clerk's office is reminding dog owners that all dogs over six months old must be licensed by June 30th for the 2023-2024 year. Renewals may be done in person, by mail, or online if the rabies vaccine is current. If the rabies information is expired, owners must submit the updated rabies certificate for the license to be processed. The cost for a dog license is $8 for a neutered or spayed dog, and $19 for a non-altered dog. After June 30th, a penalty charge will be imposed of $1 per month for each month that the dog is not licensed. For more information, you can call the town clerk's office. Household hazardous waste collection. Plainville residents can participate in the household hazardous waste collection at the Town of Berlin's Residential Recycling Center, located at 642 Christian Lane in Berlin, Connecticut. This will be on Friday, May 19th, from 2:30 PM to 6:30 PM. A proof of residency is required, and a list of acceptable items is available on the Town of Plainville website. From the Historical Society, the Plainville Historical Society is hosting a program with Christopher Weigren. Am I pronouncing that last name correctly?
I think he uses Weigren.
Weigren?
Yeah. I had initially said Weigren.
Yeah. I was going to ask you beforehand. Okay. So Christopher Weigren, the author of the book Connecticut Architecture: Stories of 100 Places, published by Wesleyan University Press, on Wednesday, May 24th. The program starts at 7:00 PM at the Historical Center at 29 Pierce Street. And the public can register by emailing From the Central Connecticut Chamber of Commerce, for any information regarding Chamber of Commerce programs, including registration, you can visit www centralctchambers.org. Regional Business After Hours at Higher Med on Wednesday, May 24th, at 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM at Higher Med LLC, located on Whiting Street, 53 Whiting Street. You can meet and create relationships with other business professionals representing a variety of industries. Refreshments will be provided. The Legislative Roundtable will be on Wednesday, May 31st, from 7:30 PM to 9:00 PM in the Hughes Auditorium of the Bristol Hospital. This event will feature a guest speaker from the CBIA. It is the Eric Giede, Vice President for the Public Policy with CWBA. I think that is also another last name I mispronounced. Admission is free and participation can be either in-person or virtual. And the State of the City and Towns on Thursday, June 22nd, from 7:30 AM to 9:00 AM. You can join municipal leaders from the surrounding area, including Town Manager Paulus, for a special breakfast meeting to learn about how local communities are doing and what is in store for the remainder of their year. From the Public Library, for any information on library programs, including registration, you can call the Plainville Public Library at 860-793-1446, or visit www plainvillect.com/library. The first event is Spring is in the Air: A Piano Celebration. This is on Thursday, May 18th, at 6:30 PM in the Chase Auditorium. You can enjoy a medley of spring-themed songs by pianist David Everly, featuring classics from Roger Habenstein and Frank Sinatra. Butterfly Crafts for Kids is happening on the week of May 22nd to May 27th. The library's Youth Services Department has been raising butterflies, and to celebrate their release to nature, children of all ages can stop by the library to make a butterfly craft. And they also have a drop-in Lego Club. This is on Tuesdays from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM, until the end of May. The library's Youth Services Department is hosting a Lego Club, which is open to children of all ages, five and up, and their caregivers, and no registration is required. And finally, from the Senior Center, for information on Senior Center programs, you can call the Plainville Senior Center at 860-747-5728. And all programs are free and open to the public unless otherwise indicated. The first is Health Body Series on Tuesdays from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM. This is weekly through the end of May. And you can join Karen Pagliaro, a nurse, in exploring healthy eating habits that can assist you in moving your body in a healthier direction. You can share recipes, and there will be guest speakers as well. Snappy Senior Photography on Thursday, May 18th, at 10:30 AM. You could join this event, where participants will share photos of their favorite events or activities. Memory Cafe at the Senior Center on Thursday, May 18th, at 2:00 PM. Memory Cafe is a warm and welcoming program for individuals with memory loss. Anyone experiencing memory loss is welcome to attend with their loved one or caregiver. Veteran Social Hour on Tuesday, May 23rd, at 10:00 AM, conducted by Sherry Voe, the Veterans Liaison for Hartford Healthcare Senior Services. And this program is open to all veterans over the age of 60 and their spouses. Memory Screening on Tuesday, May 23rd, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. This is by appointment only. It is a 10-minute memory screening from the Alzheimer's Foundation of America. This is not a diagnosis of any particular illness, and it is completely confidential. And it's conducted by a memory care advisor from Arden Courts. Book Bud's May Book: The Magnolia Palace by Fiona Davis. This is open to any member of the book club. On Friday, May 26th, at 10:00 AM, they'll be meeting to discuss this historical novel set in one of New York City's most impressive Gilded Age mansions. If, for those who are interested, you can join the book club. There are books available at the Plainville Library. And finally, there's an event called Inside Alcatraz on Thursday, June 8th, at 10:00 AM. It is presented by Joe Willett, the History Guy. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you for all the good information.
Yes.
We appreciate it. Does anybody have any questions for Andy regarding his report? Okay. Thank you again. All right. Moving on to our public comment section during this time, we welcome the public to speak to the council. The podium over to my left is where you will speak. You'll be given one opportunity to speak for three minutes. When you do come to the podium, please state your name and address. Does anybody wish to speak to the council?
John Kisler, 65 First Phila Avenue. Good evening, Town Council. First of all, I don't have an opinion on the school closing, but I think you should do a new study. And I'm opposed to renovate at new at the middle school if the school is going to be saved. And I can give you some of the reasons. First of all, they're saying there's 203 items in the project. I think this council should get a list of all 203, who wrote them up, and how much each cost, so you can make an opinion if some could be eliminated. Because I think we could renovate that school for a lot less money. Now Chairman Pagliisi took a few things away from me tonight, which I report. First of all, Southington is in the same position. They backed off on a school renovation project for some of the same reasons as us. Farmington High School has the steal up, $139 million. They're already $6 or $9 million more that they have to get. This project, if you do renovate it, it was going to go over $60 million. The way things happened because of COVID and materials and all, it's not feasible to do renovate as new. And my other thought is, how does making a school pretty help the education of our students? Does it make them smarter? I don't think so. I think they have to find a new way of new curriculum to start teaching these kids the way we were taught when I went to school and a lot of you went to school. Now, Councilman Wazorko said the town made mistakes. I agree. I was opposed to closing down Linden Street School. That thing was built like a fort. Look what it could have done for us now. It's just unbelievable. But the other thing I have, completely another subject. I went to the Board of Ed meeting, last meeting, and I spoke. I left after I spoke, because their meetings are too long. But I listened to it later on Nutmeg. And I'll tell you, I was disgusted with these Democrats that acted like complete bullies, trying to force their will on Republicans who have already made a decision once. And I will say that Rachel Buchanan, Lori Peterson, really exposed those Democrats as the bullies they are. And if you get a chance, take an hour or so of your time and listen to that meeting, you will be disgusted of how these Democrats on the town, on the Board of Education, are acting. It's sad. I know I don't have time now, but I'll save it for next meeting. I was once on a school closing committee for Toffelawn Press School, and it was not a good experience. I'll save it for next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council?
Good evening. I'm Tom Fodi. I live at 15 Bradley Street. Before the board looks at the possibility of spending $20,000 or $30,000 or $50,000 or $90,000 on a study, I would take a look at the packet that was reviewed tonight. You look at the math. You're trying to take three, potentially, take 390 students out of Linden and divide them into Toffelawn and Wheeler. Based on the current enrollments, that means adding roughly 220 to Toffelawn and 170 to Wheeler. Just based on the general number of classrooms, that puts the average classroom size at 25 in order to make that work at Wheeler, and 23, excuse me, at Toffelawn, and 23 at Wheeler. That's the average. We know, particularly for the younger students, they can't put that many kids in a room. You just don't, putting aside, we have all the teachers, you don't have a place to put them. And if we say, oh, well, enrollment's dropping. Let's say enrollment drops 10% in five years, which is a ridiculous number, of course. But that drops it to 22 and 21 for average classroom size in the two schools. It doesn't work. You don't have a place to put the kids if you take them out of Linden. There's no place for them to go. You don't need a complicated study to go, where do we put 390? Can't send them to everybody's home. We're not going to hopefully not have homeschooling again for a long time. It's not a complicated issue as far as that goes. You want to argue about what to spend money on to fix the middle school, that's a different argument. But this notion of a study to determine the feasibility of closing Linden doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so?
Hi, Gail Black, 4 CNC Avenue. Let's see. First, you know, I came in late, so I'm not sure what you're talking about, what water that they're working on. what water that they're working on. Is that one of the water pumps that delivers the drinking water to our places? There's two water pumps.
It's, no, can you fill us in?
It's the wastewater pump, shut metal, yeah, so it's not, it's not water, it's wastewater. It's sewer.
Other direction.
What's that?
Yeah, other direction, not the water.
Okay.
Taking it away.
Thank you. This is a silly question. How many miles on your vehicle that you're auctioning off?
Great question. I do not have the mileage on that.
Is it over $200,000?
I don't know.
You don't know?
I don't know.
Okay, just curious. Okay. At any rate, I'm actually here to ask for something. I'm asking for a sign for my street. I've been there 20 years, and what I'd like to see is a street that warns about children on the street. When I moved in, there was no children. Now, all of a sudden, there's like a dozen, and CNC is pretty small. And I noticed there's like all the parents going to see, make sure the kids got on the, you know, on the buses, and then they go back at the end of the day and they pick them up. But we've had some, one guy came off of Route 10, came around, went into the first building and smashed right into the building, made a hole there. The police said he was drinking, but I don't know what's true or not, but at any rate, I don't want to see anything happen to the kids. You know, like, all of a sudden, it just happened. Probably some are coming out from the condos. I don't know where, but I just think it's a good idea. This should be, it can be a small sign, but there was at least a dozen, and I, you know, I don't know if, I stopped at the police, and they said I could come here and ask. So, but if you could think about it, I just think it would be, it would make the parents feel a lot better, and other people may not be aware. Okay. And the only thing I should be, should be taking care of the school, taken out of the schools, I think, is any asbestos. Take that out, that's all.
Thanks, Gail. We can, we can look into that, a sign that children are in the neighborhood with the police department, I suppose. We'd have to go with those guys?
Yeah, I'll take care of it. Yeah. Do a review.
... Department of Transportation, I think that was it. They said I could go talk to him, but I thought I was going to come to you guys first.
Yeah. We'll work on that. We'll work on that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gail. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so?
Lou Frango's 10 Fairbank Street. If I may ask the council, do we know, what is the projected enrollment for the next 10 years in the school system?
For 10 years?
Yeah. Or even five years. Just give us a forecast of what's coming down the road, because all I keep hearing is attendance dropping.
Well, I don't know, it's a specific number. I know tonight, the superintendent said it's been holding steady as to where it is right now, with very little movement either way, so 10 years, I'm not sure what that would be, though. We don't.
Would that be part of a study?
It would be. Yes, it would be, of course. Enrollments would be a very important part of it.
Okay.
Yep.
The next thing I'm bringing up now, see, and this is what led to that second, that second question is, you know, I've gone through the high school renovations, including the football field. I've seen Linden Street School fixed, cleaned up. Wheeler build is new. Now we're talking the middle school, and I would almost put money on the table. Once we completed the middle school, give us two years and we'll be talking Toffelon School. All right? That's, that's just a guess on my part, but it seems to be a progression. Once we could put this one in the closet, we'll start this one. Now, with that said, the reason, what's being presented, has been presented, is a study. And I think a lot of the questions, pro and con, for building, renovating, et cetera, et cetera, could be satisfied by a confirmed study, by professionals. Because if, let's be candid about it, if I'm really pro-school, what am I going to say at this podium? Give me the money. If I'm really against it for whatever situations, I'm going to turn around and say, we don't really need it. It just, but if the professional comes in, looks at the whole agenda, what has to be done and not done, and presents it, then you better be smarter than the person that presented it. That's, and, and we're talking a lot of money. And, and I'm concluding with, in fact, I brought the article, I see what's happening at the Southington Schools. And what started off, I think, $135 million or something, and now they're fighting back and left. They don't know what to do. One school they wanted to tear down, now they want to put it back together again, one of the older ones, and all that. And all I'm saying with a professional, let's clean the air and let's get it satisfied, and a person like me coming up and saying, well, I think, really doesn't mean much. The professional has looked at it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Anybody else before I close? Okay. Thank you for your comments. We'll move along to our next item of business. We do not have any old business, and we are into approval of our new business items. Item number one, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to appropriate $555,000 for general fund assignment, fund balance, account number 0100-000-32110-0000, with $359,250 to inter-fund transfer out, account number 0100-840-55512-000, and $195,752 inter-fund transfer out, account number 0100-840-55511-0000.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion or questions on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, please.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion for the Town Council acting as Water Pollution Control Authority to award bid number 2023-18, shuttle metal pump station bidding and construction phase engineering services to tie and bond Rocky Hill, Connecticut, in the amount of $274,000.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion for Town Council acting as the Water Pollution Control Authority to waive the bid process and award bid number 2023-25, WPC Security Cameras to Omni Data, West Haven, Connecticut, in the amount of $26,333.04.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to waive the bid process and award bid number 2024-01, WPC SBR Decanter to Aqua Aerobic Systems, Inc., Loves Park, Illinois, in the amount of $99,783.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, please.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Tompkins.
Motion to approve the former fire marshal vehicle for auction.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Tompkins.
Motion to appoint the firm of Clifton Larson Allen to conduct an audit for the Town of Plainville's 2024 fiscal year.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven.
Madam Chair. Motion to establish a public hearing on Monday, June 5th, 2023, at 7:00, in the Municipal Center, to hear public comment on the use of coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds associated with the American Rescue Plan Act.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Tompkins.
Motion number eight is to set the mill rate tonight for the fiscal year 2024, but I was hoping that we could have some discussion on that, to see if we should go forward with that tonight, or perhaps make that another meeting.
Postpone it till?
June 5th.
The June meeting?
Yes.
Well, I had talked to Rob Buden, our finance director, when we did the agenda, and he suggested we do it tonight because of timeliness in getting the tax bills to the company that prepares them for us and gets them out in the mail on time. So, that was Rob's suggestion to us.
Okay. I don't think two weeks would really endanger that, do you?
I'm only going by what he said.
Madam Chair.
Do I have to talk to him?
Yeah, how about we have Rob?
Rob, would you mind coming and helping us out, please?
I think the issue is getting tax bills to the people before July 1st.
Understood, understood. We got it.
But, Rob.
Rob.
Good evening. Yeah, I mean, you know, there's a charter section, too, that says the Town Council shall set the mill rate 30 days after budget adoption, which theoretically would be May 25th, I believe. It's just the way your calendar, the calendar is this year with the schedule of your meetings, it's May 15th. Obviously, you know, shall does not mean require. There have been other years due to extenuating circumstances, excuse me, that we've done the tax bills as late as possible. And during those years, we stated that as late as possible is around June 1st, because it pushes my staff to the wall essentially to get these done, which could mean more errors in reviewing the tax bills that come back from the company that we have prepare them. It's really, you know, we have day-to-day activities we have to do, then they have to look at, you know, 9,000 tax bills and verify all of them. Two weeks extra, to your point, Ms. Tompkins? Yes, that is a big difference and a big change.
And it's really three weeks, right? We have?
Well, in this case, right, because June 5th versus the Memorial Day, I think, would be two weeks from today. But it really is more, you know, we don't like to make any errors, and when you're forced or to do something quickly to get them out and in, out in the mail, now, I'm not even going to talk about the U.S. Postal Service and their mailing and problems with the mail, so who knows if you're actually going to get it if we mail it out on June 30th. So, obviously, getting the tax bills out timely, gets cash in the door timely, which means operations can continue timely. It's more of a procedural step ladder process, and, you know, it's just better to get it out. It's not a definitive, I'm not saying or saying, no, you can't do this. It's more, it is simply much easier to do systematically versus all in and back against the wall.
Madam Chair. Yes, Ms. Mary. Yeah, I believe that, you know, if you calculated on the numbers that we approved for the budget that went to the, the all-day vote back in April, that the mill rate, and correct me if I'm wrong, it was 31.24?
42.
42. Oh, well, I was wrong. Okay.
I think so. Yeah, that's what I.
Yes, yeah, I think I have that written, yeah, I have it written down. It's 31.42, I'm sorry, yeah. Okay, would be, and I know, as I understand it, I did talk to the town manager today, you know, you know, hopefully saying, was there anything coming along in terms of revenues that? Well, there's ever the hope. There's ever that hope from. And, you know, like, you know, expecting to hear that he suddenly had heard of some windfall that we're going to get or something, or it was going to be any difference, you know, in, you know, in the expenditures, and he said, you know, nothing really new is on the horizon, and so in that sense, you know, I'm certainly ready to make a motion to set the mill rate at the 31.42. Okay. And I guess I'll do that then. Okay, a motion to set the mill rate at 31.42 for fiscal year 2024. I have a motion in a second. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I have a few numbers I would like Rob to confirm for me before we vote on this. So, our fund balance for the end, 6:30, 23, this, end of this fiscal year is estimated to be 9 million, estimated that it will be 9,140,705, right? Based on what we know today, yes. Okay, and we're planning on using for fiscal year '24, 1.424 million out of fund balance? As of right now, yes. And that would reduce our fund balance, assuming our revenues and expenditures break even, to 7,716,205? Correct. And that would be 11%? I'm assuming what you're reading to me is correct, because I don't have it in front of me, but yes. I, I would be comfortable with setting the mill rate at 31.42. I, I think, when I spoke to you earlier today, Madam Chair, I was overestimating fund balance. I was looking at last year's fund balance versus this year's. I think that we played that card enough, and I don't think that it would be responsible to increase our revenue estimates with our fund balance projected to be at that at this time. I think that we did a pretty good job. You know, the original estimate for the mill rate would have been 32.36. Somebody correct me if I'm wrong on that. We did manage to trim at expenditures enough to see a .94 decrease, and my fear right now would be, you know, we would use more fund balance than I think would be a good idea at this point, going forward into next year. And I also fear that, given that costs are going to continue to go up, that we would be setting ourselves up to be in a position next year, we were, we would see a significant increase in the mill rate, because I think that we have, unless something crazy happens and we see a lot of money coming to the town, I think we've kind of played our fund balance card over the past few years. So, with that being said, I would agree that we should set the mill rate at 31.42.
Yeah, you know, Madam Chair, I think Councilman Rocco has a good point. You know, we go down to 11 points something, I believe it's below the guideline that was recommended by a committee several years ago, so, just to speak on the motion again. Yeah. Mm-hmm. Okay. Any other comments or questions? We have a motion to set the mill rate at 31.42. Is that right? Correct. That's the number? Any other comments? Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 31.42.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve tax relief funds as listed on the addendum.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Okay. Thank you for all of that. We have a couple of more items that Michael has on our agenda, other discussions of interest.
Yes.
Would you like to carry on?
Absolutely. Item one is just a note that there will be a Vietnam Veterans Ceremony on June 13th at 5:00 p.m. at the Plainville High School Auditorium. This is something that the Lieutenant Governor has been doing for a number of years throughout the state, and now, at this point, would like to recognize Vietnam veteran-era members. And so that's a great opportunity on June 13th, Tuesday. And then the other item is just a quick update on the fact that the road paving and sidewalk projects have concluded, and I think they did a great job out there. I barely heard any, I did feel some complaints with respect to some of the driveways and so forth and lawns, so they've completed the schedule, and the sidewalks are finished on Florence and Lane and Maxine Road are finished. I think they look great, and the road paving is finished, but with respect to the, you know, final course, so the issues with aprons and driveway aprons, they'll be going around doing that starting tomorrow. They are continuing with the restoration of the lawns and seating in areas where they had to disturb in certain areas, and then also the curbing around the catch basins and areas.